Good afternoon. We have a quorum present, and I am calling the June 16, 2015, meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no special guest with us, obviously, to lead us in the pledge in the moment of silence. I always miss our young guest during the summer. Are there any introductions that any of my colleagues would like to make of folks in the audience? Then we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as recommended by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of Dr. Harding's motion? Thank you. Is five zero. Moving on to approval of the minutes.
Yes, Madam President. I move for the approval of the minutes that were in our packet for the closed session that was held on Tuesday, June 2, and the business meeting that same day, June 2, 2015.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guesford. Any questions on the minutes? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. And that brings us to public comment, and we have one individual signed up, Jim Jacobus. If you'll come forward, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you for this opportunity to address the board. As you may recall, I addressed the board on May 5 regarding the redistricting boundary proposals. The one we addressed, as you know, has since been passed. What I am concerned about is, in the letter I sent to the board here, is the boundary, or the recommendation number 12, which calls for the reassignment of my child and others in my neighborhood over to Fountain Rock from Williamsport Elementary. Now, I don't want to repeat or be redundant about anything I said at the previous hearing, but I do want to just throw a couple of things out here real briefly. Since FIAC had proposed this particular boundary alignment over a year ago, the enrollment at Williamsport Elementary has decreased significantly. So, and basically, what the information that recommendation number 12 was based on is actually outdated information right now, if you look at the current enrollment figures. I know this because I looked through my son's yearbook when he got it recently, and there's currently 580 students at Williamsport Elementary, or there were at the end of this past school year. So this is only 10 students over the state rate of capacity of 570. When recommendation 12 was first proposed over a year ago, the enrollment was at 621. So since that time, 41 students, or the enrollment has decreased 41 students. So really, if you look at this, the goal of this recommendation was to reduce that population by 35 students. That actually has already been accomplished now without any changes happening. Right now, it sits below 41. We just had a large 5th grade class just transition out of the school this past year. There was around 100, and there's about that many in the next 4th grade class, which will already be out by that time, too. So, and as indicated for the different reasons I indicated in my last public statement, the enrollment at Williamsport Elementary is likely to trend downward in the next few years, and that is because the large groups coming in or leaving right now are being replaced by smaller groups. They only had 80 kindergarteners there this past year compared to 100 4th and 5th graders in each grade respectively. So what I'm asking the board again, or well, what I'd like to ask is, since the enrollment is likely to decrease or stabilize at Williamsport, I would like the board to reconsider the passage of recommendation number 12. What I'd like to ask you to do is, if you don't want to rescind that recommendation, at least table that recommendation until the fall enrollment numbers come in, and take a look at it then, and then make a decision. Yeah, and I'd like to reiterate this point because, you know, this is affecting a lot of people in our neighborhood, and as indicated when I addressed this, or when the board voted on this, we're not apartments. We're actually single-family homes over there. So we've been in that community a long time. We're not transient. We're invested in the community. So this is the reason why a lot of us are opposed to this boundary realignment. So again, I just ask that the board maybe hold off and look at the fall enrollment numbers at Williamsport Elementary this fall, and maybe reevaluate that decision of recommendation number 12. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobus. Any board member response? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is the consideration of appeals. Excuse me. Excuse me. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to come forward and address the board at this time? Good. Thank you. On to unfinished business, consideration of appeals regarding school attendance zone recommendations for the year 2016-17, by board members. I would like to read into the records some background, and then we'll have a discussion. On June 2, 2015, the Washington County Board of Education conducted its regularly scheduled public business meeting. On that date, the Board of Education approved a motion regarding boundary realignment recommendation number four and number 12. Administrative Regulations JCA R permits an interested parent or guardian to note an appeal in writing within five business days of the date of the Board of Education's decision. The Board of Ed received an appeal on June 9, 2015, with regard to its decision concerning boundary realignment recommendation number 12. The appeal has been assigned Appeal Number 02-15-R, number 12. The Board of Education received another appeal on June 10, 2015, with regard to its decision concerning boundary realignment recommendation number four. That appeal has been assigned Appeal Number 03-15-R, number four. Each Board of Education member has been provided a copy of the subject appeals. The appellant's were provided an opportunity to offer comments during the public comment portion of the Board of Education's business meeting. Please note that in the course of the Board of Ed's deliberations regarding all of the realignments, consideration has been given to our Facility and Enrollment Advisory Committee's report and recommendations, the superintendent's report and recommendations, the emails, letters, and documents that have been provided by members of the public and staff, and other documents that are part of the official record, the comments offered by citizens during the Board of Education meetings, and the public hearing conducted on May 4, 2015. Now, since this is a judicial proceeding and we are required to have a recorded action, the Chair will not be seeking a motion or a second. The floor is now open for comments by my colleagues on the appeal, and then we'll move to a vote on whether to grant this appeal, and we'll discuss the 02-15-R, number 12, first. The floor is now open. Mr. Guesford.
Thank you, Ms. Breitman. I was in favor of this motion the last time to rescind that, and I would like to see that proper, but I would like to see that that is...
So you would, you're wanting to grant the appeal that's now under...
Yeah, to grant the appeal.
Okay.
To allow those 35 students to stay there, to transfer down to Fountain Rock Elementary School. Only because I feel that, again, they take the time to go around with their neighbors, get their signatures, do the process. They have, you know, lived in that area. They've devoted time and effort to their community by applying homes, and it is an apartment complex where people do take care of their house. The enrollment is down. I'd like to see them staying at that school. My thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Guesford. Other comments? Ms. Fisher?
Realtors do not have a crystal ball, and they shouldn't promise parents that their children will remain in a certain school or set of schools because they're not the ones that make those decisions, and they're not the ones who are held by law to try to adjust the numbers at schools so that each school has a similar percentage of attendance. If we give in to personal preferences for attendance at schools, we would not be able to balance those percentages system-wide that we are required to try and keep as level as possible. I will not be voting to grant this appeal because it is not consistent with board members' pledge to do what's in the best interest of the majority of students in the system and to equal out those attendance percentages.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Seeing no other comments, I appreciate the comments we did receive in consideration of this appeal, and at this point, I will request that we go to vote on whether to grant this appeal. Those in favor of granting the appeal, please signify. The grant, the appeal fails to move forward, and the existing recommendation stands confirmed. That was two in favor and three opposed. No.
Two in favor, three opposed.
It fails to move forward. We didn't get the four, but it fails to move forward. All right. We're now moving on to the next appeal, 03-15-R, number four. We'll follow the same process. The floor is open for comments. Yes, Mrs. Fisher?
For similar reasons for the last appeal and for the following additional reason, I will not be supporting this grant on this appeal. We have all, in the past, we have had other parents appeal because of childcare concerns, and it's not that I'm not sympathetic to that. But one of the reasons we try to determine redistricting far ahead of the actual event is to allow parents time to make arrangements, to make other arrangements. Parents also have the opportunity to file a special request exemption for that one individual, but to reassign 23 students because one family has an issue with childcare, is not consistent, again, with the board members' pledge to do what's in the best interest of the majority of students in the school system. So I will not be voting to support this appeal either.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Other comments from my colleagues?
Ms. Breitman?
Yes.
Just a few comments that I'll provide. According to our counsel, the standard on an appeal is whether the processes that are established in policy and that are required by law were followed, were followed correctly, and whether the board considered the things that are policies and that law requires that we consider when we cast these votes. And I believe that they were. I believe that the volume of information produced by the Facilities Enrollment Advisory Committee, the time they spent, the responses they had to concerns from the community, feedback from board members throughout the process, all indicate to me that this process was followed as it's designed by the state and by the local school system. These are never easy processes for parents, or for parents or for board members. In fact, what first got me coming to board meetings was when I was sitting where Mr. Jacobus was, in a different building, but came to public comment regarding redistricting issues quite a few years ago. So I won some of those requests, and I lost some, too. So I completely understand the challenges that these decisions create for families, but I think it is our obligation to utilize the resources that this community entrusts us with, which are the facilities and the buildings that our students go to be educated every day, to the best extent that we can. And this is part of that process, and I think that the recommendations and the board's approval of those have met that charge. So I, as I did not vote for the other one, I will not be voting to support this appeal. I would say to the comments regarding what's going to happen next year with enrollment, this board has, in the past, changed individual groups of attendance areas in response to a change in enrollment in a particular school or in a particular couple of schools. We did that with Paramount a couple of years ago. So I know our team is constantly looking at what the enrollment looks like at various schools in an effort to support us and in an effort themselves to ensure that we're getting the best value we can out of our resources, and those are the schools that our students attend. So I'm confident that if there is a drastic change in enrollment that creates an overcrowded situation at one school and a lot of available space in another school, that they'll make us aware of that, and the board will be able to consider that when the time comes. But I think, based on the information that was gathered, that was put together, and that was available to us, I think the decisions that the board made, even though I didn't agree with all of them, I think the decisions that the board made were based on the facts as we know them and our best estimate of what we expect to see in the year or years ahead. So for all those reasons, I will not support this appeal, and I did not support the other appeal.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Further comments? I will just add as a reminder that these recommendations on boundary realignment will not go into effect this fall, but 2016-17. So to Dr. Harding's comments, we will be keeping track of the enrollment and any changes that we need to be responsive to. Thank you for those comments. At this point, I will request that we vote on whether to grant this appeal. All those in favor of the appeal? All those opposed to the appeal? The appeal does not move forward. That was zero and five opposed to granting this appeal. I would like to add at this point that any further right to appeal will be to the State Board of Education as provided by 4-205(c) of the education article. An appeal to the State Board of Education shall be taken within 30 calendar days of the decision of the local Board of Education. All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just, for clarity on that, the 30-day clock for the State Board begins June 2, which was the day that we voted not today. Is that correct?
There was some clarification on that yesterday or the day before. Mr. Trotta, are you in agreement with the statement that Dr. Harding's just made? Could you step forward? I'm sorry, or find a mic?
As long as it's clear.
Exactly.
I just want to be sure that for the individuals who are here and have taken the time to appeal, that they know what the next step is and that they know exactly when the deadlines are.
When that 30 days starts.
That's correct. The appeal process is governed by the Code of Maryland Administrative Regulations, and that provides that the decision must be appealed within 30 calendar days of the board's decision. What will occur as a result of today's vote is that a decision and order will be issued sometime today or tomorrow, and the 30-day period will run from that time period that that document is issued. Each of the appellant's will receive a copy of that decision and order. So it does not run from June 2. It'll run from the 30-day period, from the date that that decision and order is issued.
I learned something today, too, so that's good.
So 30 days forward from, in theory, tomorrow?
That is correct.
All right. Good. Thank you for that clarification. All right. We are leaving unfinished business and going into new business. Consideration, vote on contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators for 2015-2016. Mrs. Kuna, if you would like to come forward, and Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you. Before I go forward, I would like to...
There you go.
As I sit here, I have to make it clear, I am not a member of the Washington Association of Supervisors and Administrators. I am an employee of the Board of Education. But it is my process, privilege today, to recommend a ratification agreement of the agreement between the Washington County Association of School Supervisors and Administrators. Let me share with you that this process began in early spring when we met with the administrative team to see what their concerns were about what they wanted to see going forward in the agreement that they have between the school board and themselves. The process is not something that we take lightly. It is not a true negotiations process in the sense that we have mandatory bargaining topics. It is a conversation that is known commonly and affectionately around the state as meet and confer. Through this series of meet and confer meetings, we spent a great deal of time talking about issues that were important to the administrators. Ultimately, we came down to one issue that we really wanted to talk about that we couldn't resolve administratively, and that dealt with compensation. I think it's important for you to all know, as a board, that the administrators wanted to help lead the conversation in this district. They understand that it's a difficult time for this board financially. They watched the budget-building process and clearly understood some of the struggles that you had. They were very thoughtful about the struggle that putting a budget together might have on the young people that they're privileged to serve, and they ultimately came to an understanding that the money authorized by the board was what they would accept and that they're, I think, quite honestly proud to receive from you as a board. That means that this will take place, that each of the administrators who are on a 13-year scale step will step forward one step, and that those few administrators who are on the very top of our scale will receive a 1% increase. It is within the parameters established by the Board of Education in both private session and through the budget-building process. So it is my privilege to say to you that I hope that you will accept and ratify the decision. Ms. Kuna's here to speak to the process, if you'd like, as well.
Ms. Kuna?
I concur with what Dr. Wilcox was saying. It was a very...
Please put the mic there.
Okay. It was a very collegial conversation, and we appreciate the dialogue that we have each time we come and meet and confer. So I concur with everything he said, and I'm in agreement. And I'm here this afternoon. Daryl Marriott is usually the person who you would see. His wife had back surgery, so I'm taking care of it for him and our members today. So thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. I'm seeking a motion on this action.
Madam President, I move to approve the contract between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators for the 2015-2016 school year.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guesford. Discussion? Questions? Mrs. Fisher?
Personally, I am reluctant to vote for this item simply because negotiations with the other employee groups is still ongoing. Nevertheless, the A&amp;S group has moved forward in good faith, and therefore, I will vote to support this contract agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Other comments?
Ms. Breitman?
Yes.
I just want to thank the administrators and supervisors. Thank you, Ms. Kuna, and thank the other members of the leadership team for your work with Dr. Wilcox and his team. I'm glad that we could get this accomplished. We appreciate your understanding and appreciate the work that you do every day in the classroom.
Thank you.
And please, please understand that as we've worked very hard to try to come up with funds to compensate our employees the way we would like to, that it is all with the work that you all do every day in mind. So thank you for your partnership, and thanks for your leadership of your organization.
I'll pass that on to the membership. I appreciate that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? We'll call the question. Dr. Harding's motion to accept this agreement. All those in favor? No opposed? No abstentions? Five zero. Very good. Thank you so much again. Great.
We believe that you have two documents up front, and if you would be willing to come sign them with Mrs. Kuna, they are right there in those folders.
Have to sign as well, Dr. Wilcox. Your name's there. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well done. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuna.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Give our best regards to everyone in the board section. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Moving on to consideration, Mr. Simler, donation in the amount of $10,000 to Clear Spring Elementary from Clear Spring Elementary PTA.
Good afternoon, Ms. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. I am seeking your approval of a donation in the amount of $10,000 from the Clear Spring Elementary PTA to Clear Spring Elementary School. The funds will be used to purchase technology such as iPads and iPad Cart for the use of school. school and classroom-based instruction.
Thank you. A motion, please.
Madam President, I move to approve a donation in the amount of $10,000 to Clear Spring Elementary School from the Clear Spring Elementary PTA.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Second?
Second.
Dr. Harding's. Thank you. Any discussion, questions? Always great to see this support in the community. Thank you. All right. A vote on to receive and approve this donation. All those in favor? No opposed? Five-zero. Thank you again, and send our appreciation back to the PTA.
I will. Thank you.
Consideration of the FY 2015 Interest-Free School Loan Request. Mr. South?
Good afternoon. Each year, the Finance Department seeks applications for interest-free school loans for the Board of Education. These loans are made from the proceeds of a fund that the Board of Education established over the years from unclaimed estates that have been distributed to the school system. These loans are available to all Washington County Public Schools and groups that support the Washington County Public Schools. This year, the Board received only one application for an interest-free loan. That request comes from the Clear Spring High School Athletic Boosters. This request is for $10,000, and it's to be used to purchase equipment for the new Clear Spring High School weight room. The request is within the parameters as set forth in the Board's procedures. Additionally, the principal has endorsed this application, and the boosters have an acceptable payback plan. There are sufficient funds available to meet the request. Therefore, staff recommends that the Board approve the Clear Spring High School Athletic Boosters loan request.
Thank you, Mr. South. A motion, please.
Madam, I move to approve the request for the Clear Spring High School School Athletic Boosters for a $10,000 loan to purchase equipment for a new weight room at Clear Spring High School.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. A second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Discussion, questions?
Breitman?
Yes.
At the risk of making Mr. South lose even more of his voice, how do schools and athletic booster clubs find out about the availability of these? I know you wrote about when you put out the solicitation to see if anybody was interested, but if somebody's watching this, or how did they go about starting this process of getting the kind of loan that Clear Spring is getting today?
Board policy requires that this be done once a year in the spring, and each April, we, the Finance Department, on the Board's behalf, sends out an announcement to the principals that the time has come for submitting the requests for such loans. With that solicitation, we obviously transmit all the required paperwork so that the principal and/or the booster groups can send in the required information to request a loan. We do remind the principals each year that there have, in the past, been times when booster groups have not been made aware or been made aware of the availability of these and ask the principals to be sure that all interested parties have an opportunity to get that information in. Then normally, about halfway through the process, we remind the schools again that the process is ongoing and to touch base with any groups, either within the school or school support groups that may be interested in such loans.
Great. And is there, what's the track record of repayment on these? Have we ever had one that hasn't been repaid on time and on schedule?
We have never had one of these loans that has not been repaid on time.
Excellent. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I think you've put in our backup documentation here that they will be giving back $2,000 per year for five years to be funded by fundraisers and concession stand sales. And then you have a list of the officers and the approval and knowledge of what their existing balance is. So I just wanted everyone, again, to understand that there is a process. Okay. Very good. Any additional comments, questions? Okay. The question is on Mr. Gessford's motion. All those in favor? Five, none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to our consent agenda consideration. Mrs. Freeman, we do have a long list again, and just for people to understand, this is the end of our fiscal year coming up, so we needed to take care of business on this consent agenda.
Correct. And we're also planning for next fiscal year. There are 17 procurements on the consent agenda for your consideration this afternoon. These procurements were discussed by the Procurement Review Committee in its meeting on June 9th. The superintendent has authorized these purchases to go forward. That's why they're on your agenda today. I've invited all the staff folks who have done some of the legwork on these procurements to this meeting. Hopefully, they're here to answer any questions you might have. And that said, I will turn the agenda back over to the Board for any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. A motion, please. And there's a long one, so who's going to tackle this?
I'll be glad to do it.
Thank you.
If it comes up here.
Read off mine.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to approve the bids proposals for providing local produce to Greenberg Farms Wholesale Produce Company and Reinhardt Orchards at bid unit prices. Baseball and softball field restoration to aqua turf irrigation at $79,800. Heating oil, second renewal to James River Petroleum at $0.145 per gallon, and East River Energy at $0.0329 per gallon. Custodial products, first renewal to Weiss Brothers at $511,518, and Xpedex at $32,901. Security camera systems, second renewal to Atlantic Security Systems at unit prices. Milk, first renewal to Gallagher Potomac Farms Dairy at $552,034. Commercial storage and delivery, first renewal to Exela Distribution at unit prices. Digital curriculum to AgPax Learning at $102,500. Teacher observation software to Teachscape Incorporated at $54,810. 92 computers for AutoCAD programs to CDW Government at $90,569.28. 14 3D printers to Hartford Computer Group at $39,410. 22 projectors to Nicholas P. Pepino Associates at $32,450. Computers and devices for various schools to Apple Incorporated at $164,277.80. IBM Blade servers to Tamalpee Group, I don't know if they're French, Group, at $36,240. Paper punch for digital press to Canon Solutions America at $79,938. Annual maintenance of print center equipment to Canon Solutions America at $131,936. And 14 computers for Antietam Academy and Washington County Technical High School to Hartford Computer Group at $28,710.
Thank you very much. Would you like to repeat that backwards?
Not interested, no.
Okay.
But will if required.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Questions, discussion for staff? Yes, Ms. Fisher.
I have questions about five different items on the consent agenda, but it's more just a point, they're points of information rather than any problem with them. The first one is number nine. It's the teacher observation software program. I was a little bit confused when I first read this, and I want to make sure I understand it clearly. It calls for 1,890 users. To me, the users would be the people conducting the observation, and I don't think we have 1,890 administrators. Instead, is this one of these items per teacher that's being observed? Is that how this?
Yes. This is for all teachers and all administrators who are involved in this, so everybody has an account in Teachscape.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. Next one's bid number 10. It's for 92 computers for AutoCAD instructional programs. I understand that this is a fairly sophisticated program for design and drafting, and I understand Tech High. But do we have programs in design and drafting at Springfield, New Russell Hacks?
We've been using AutoCAD at the middle schools for a number of years, particularly at those two schools. Absolutely.
Wow. Okay. Didn't know that. Bid number 11. This is for 3D printers, something else I was not aware of, and I didn't know that we were adding a 3D printing curriculum component to the foundations of technology. Is this a new state requirement or just something we decided to do?
I can't respond if it's a new state requirement, but 3D printers are just a common thing right now. Probably, our first 3D printer was six, seven, eight years ago, a Tech High. I was amazed to watch, not on a flat piece of paper, but have this thing you could hold in your hand after it was printed, and it had moving parts inside of moving parts that were inside of moving parts. And it was printed. It was not molded. It was not, you know, put together or anything. It was printed. And now they've become fairly common, so it's part of the curriculum.
Well, it calls for 14 printers, and then it also says one is to go to each high school. When did we get 14 high schools?
Well, the foundations of technology will be taught in each of the high schools. I think one was for one of the advanced programs. I'm not sure I can answer your question beyond that.
Secondary school, middle and high schools?
Right. We have sec...
Including second, middle schools.
They're going all to middle schools as well? Is that it?
Yes. That's correct.
Oh. Okay. On to number 13. This is a purchase of a number of computers for various purposes and reasons, but there are some computers there for private schools. Is that something we get reimbursed for in some way?
It's part of the special education pass-through grant, I believe.
So it's part of the grant.
I think it's grant-related that we have to support someplace.
All right. And my last one, then, is for item 16. $132,000 for a service contract. Do we pay that full amount even if we don't use the contract, or is this like an estimated allotment based on past experience that we might expend that much money on repairs?
I think it's our annual service agreement, where they keep our, all of our printers down there, the OSAs, up and running and working, and based on past usage. We increase, we used to increase in the summer. I think we've gone to maintaining that increase annually in the summer. We have the ability to bump up our contract if necessary, or, you know, lower it if necessary. But it's our annual amount that we anticipate using.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Other questions?
I have one.
Yes, Dr. Harding's.
Just one on item 14. The servers, to what extent are we able, or are we beginning to migrate to keeping things in the cloud rather than running everything off of our own servers?
I can't put a percentage to it, but each time the Blade servers come up, I ask the question, is this something we'd be better served in the cloud as opposed to having physically having servers here? I believe the last purchase that we had, the devices that we were purchasing on that purchase order by Jim Corns and Arnold Hammond, agreed that the cloud and the cost to go back and forth and the speed that we need, it would be much more costly, maybe like a couple hundred thousand dollars more to do it that way. So I think we're looking at each opportunity that we have, that it's more cost-beneficial, more practical to have it in the cloud, more reliable to have it in the cloud. We've been doing that. Some of these servers are the first step in, like, securing the email to even get it to the cloud. So what I understand from some of our servers, you have to have this first step before we can even get to the cloud piece. But we are looking at that with each one of these purchases, and we're trying to do what's cost-beneficial and most reliable, and we have moved quite a bit of material to the cloud. I want to say 25 or 35%, but I could be way wrong on that. I don't know if Arnold or Jim are here to help correct me or not.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to know that it was part of the conversation and sort of...
Every time we purchased it, we asked that question, and these, there's multiple servers within these services, the other thing that I understand.
It's a lot of servers.
Right. About 200 of them in total, but some of this hardware runs multiple servers.
I think one other thing you should note, because Dr. Michael has asked that we consider the study of all of our infrastructure in terms of technology, to make sure that we are having the right mix and right plan, and we're exploring who might do that for us now.
You're talking about institutional technology, not instructional-level technology.
Right. Institutional technology, looking at our network, is it appropriately set up and configured? Is the architecture appropriate? Do we have the right mix of servers, the right number of servers that have been virtualized, the right amount of cloud interplay? So we're looking for a company who can do that for us.
Great. Thank you.
The motion is on the 17 items contained in the consent agenda. All those in favor? That's five, none opposed. There we go. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Dr. Michael. Superintendent's update. Uh-oh. What'd I do?
Nothing. Mr. Hay just sent me a text that said my mic was off. He wants me to repeat everything I just said on the virtualized servers. No.
Always trying.
I think there really are just a couple of things that I want to share. Number one, we had, I think, a very successful end to the school year, a year that was filled with lots of achievement, both academically and irrscholastically, for our young people. You know, we're going to open back up again on August 19th and try and do it again, so we're excited about that. I was privileged to send a message home to all of our families and to all of our teachers to thank them for their service and thank them for their participation. So very excited about, you know, a successful completion to the school year. The second thing I want to share with you is, even though Coleman is not here today, this ends his term as the Board-designated student representative. And I certainly know that some of you will say some nice things about Coleman, but I think it's important to note that we've had a great succession of young student board leaders, folks who have gone on to really great academic careers and great careers within the larger community. That said, Coleman is no exception to that. Coleman has finished the year as both a successful scholar and a student athlete. He's a recognized leader at North High and was so recognized as he walked across the stage for being one of the top graduates at North High. We have prepared this plaque for Coleman, and we will make sure that it gets to him and his family. But I simply wanted to recognize him for his service, for his scholarship, and quite honestly, to share with him that we're looking forward to great things in his future.
Thank you. Does that conclude your...
That concludes my comments.
All right. We're on to Board Member Committee reports. Mrs. Harshman? Whoops. I'm sorry. Skipped right over. We don't care about personnel. Sorry. Moving on to personnel. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Mrs. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the Board, as discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your approval, review, and approval this afternoon.
Thank you. A motion on personnel.
Madam President, I move for the approval of personnel actions as recommended by staff.
Second?
Second.
Gessford. Thank you. All those in favor? None opposed? Five-zero. There you go. Thank you.
You.
We're now moving on to reports... We're now moving on to reports to the Board. Mrs. Harshman is not with us this evening. I don't know if a committee member would like to give a report of the next meeting or any information. Okay. Mrs. Williams. Facilities.
Yes, thank you. There's been no meeting since the last report, and there is no meeting planned for June.
Has there been a decision about July?
Right now, we're leaning towards no meeting in July.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Gessford, finance?
Yes, there is no meeting in June. We have also decided that we wouldn't have one in July either.
Would not.
So.
So we're all going to meet back in August, it would appear. Mr. Ridenhour, I'm not sure he made any. Mrs. Williams, I know you serve on HR. Any report from the last meeting that you can recall?
I know that the folks in HR are working on an umbrella policy, and they will be reporting back to us with regard to the progress that they're making on that. Other than that--
A meeting in June?
Um, not that--
Recollection?
I don't recall. I don't recall.
All right, very good, thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy review, and then if you'd like to bring us up on the ad hoc as well.
Yes. Policy committee met June 9th. We reviewed five policies from Section I, which is instruction. We will be recommending in the future two of those for rescission based on their coverage in COMAR. We have one policy being revised to eliminate some ambiguous and inaccurate language, which we'll deal with at our next meeting then. We have one policy that is having some new legal language added to it. So those two will be reviewed on the 23rd of June, which is our next meeting. And finally, we have one policy being reviewed by staff for compliance with actual practice. But again, we will meet again on June 23rd at 9:00 a.m. The ad hoc committee on communication also met on June 9th. We cleaned up some language and improved the order of a few items, added two items to the document that we're working on, and also chose a title for that document that we created. We will be meeting one more time on June 23rd at 10:30, and we plan to present our recommendations for communications processes to the full Board in a work session on July 7th.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports, anything from, Ms. Williams, or anything from--
Not at this time. We have a conference planning committee meeting coming up towards the end of this month, but other than that, nothing.
Very good. Very short future agenda items. The agenda committee met briefly this afternoon, this morning, I'll get it straight, and the work session, which Mrs. Fisher noted, will be on July 7th in the morning at this point. And that information and any backup information to prepare for that will be sent home in Friday packets. So that brings us to board member comments. Mrs. Fisher, I'll start.
I have no comments today, thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Gessford?
Just want to say that I attended the Tech High graduation, and it was a great evening. It was nice and cool. So I think the weather--
It's always a plus at the Ark.
Yeah, the weather was nice and cooperative for that graduation. And also, just a shout out to the Clear Spring PTA for their donation to the school. It's good to see PTAs work within their schools for their needs, and, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort for parents because they have a lot on their plate, but it's nice that they recognize the outcome of their fruit, fruitful labor. So thanks to that school and many of the others that are passing gavels to new presidents, and we appreciate all of them.
Very good, thank you. Dr. Hartings?
Yes, I had the opportunity to be a proctor for the '24 game, the county tournament, a couple of weeks ago. I really, really enjoyed that event, not just because I like math, which I do, but it is great to see kids so engaged in learning and being competitive in an academic way with each other. There's a few things that always, I always come away from that event with. One is, you know, there's always a student or two who, for the first level, memorizes all the cards, and so they score 170 points or some crazy amount in the first round or two. But then as the cards get more difficult, to the point where you can't memorize them anymore, where you might have three or four different puzzles and you got to find the one number that solves all four of them, you really see the kids who don't just memorize, but who have a very good number sense really sort of rise to the top and succeed. And for me, that's sort of a reminder that there's two parts, I guess, at least in my experience, to math. One is that memorization that you just have to do. You just have to memorize your facts. But then there's the familiarity and the numeracy that gives kids a sense of how numbers fit together, and that's a different skill, I think. And it's great to see both of those skills on display at that event. The second thing that I always come away with, and it's one of the things that makes me feel good every year about our young people, is how impressed and encouraging some students are about the others. So there'll be a particularly hard card, and they'll all be thinking, thinking, thinking. One will get it, and invariably, somebody else at the table says, "Wow, John, that was great." And that's their competitor. But they see and recognize the skill and appreciate what that other student did to solve that problem. And it's a very kind of encouraging, positive experience. And I say that always makes me feel good about our young people because where we see images on television of people who don't display the sportsmanship that we might like, whether it's professionals or elsewhere, to see young people like that encouraging and admiring the academic success of the others, even though they're about to beat them in the game, really makes me think that there's a lot of good things going on with our young people. So thanks to the math department for the invitation and the opportunity to be a proctor, and thanks for continuing to sponsor that program. I think it's great, not only for teaching kids math, but other important life skills that I know they'll carry with them for a long time.
Thank you, Dr. Hartings. Ms. Williams? Nothing, thank you. Very good, thank you. Then I will close. I will certainly repeat some of Dr. Wilcox's comments about our board rep and colleague, the student rep and colleague, who is not with us this evening, but we'll see that he does receive his plaque and our thanks for serving through the year. And I see with us tonight, we have the incoming student rep, Erica Lee Greenwall, and I believe that our board assistant, Mrs. Chekovik, has reached out to you or will be here shortly to help you transition into your role. And anything we can do as your colleagues to help with that, please don't hesitate to ask any of us. And we're here to work with you and help you with that, and we look forward to hearing your perspective and your voice in the coming months. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.